Committee of the whole to order. For May 21, 2019, it is 6:45. We have the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Are you talking about the May 7?
May 7.
I'd like to bring to your attention the order of the agenda. Agenda item 11, other business. That actually occurred at the end after the citizens' open forum, item 12. Then other business occurred prior to the agenda.
Okay, well, these are for the committee of the whole minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can get to that certainly.
Thank you.
Yes. Any discussion or corrections to the May 7, committee of the whole minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next, we have a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board appointment. This is for an unexpired term which begins immediately and ends November 30, 2020. It is for the vacancy left by Kathy Powell, who was appointed to the Auburn City School Board. We have had 14 applicants, and it is my recommendation that we, that I nominate Hillary McIsaac.
Second.
Are there any other nominations at this time?
I'd like to nominate Lori Marine.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations to consider? Just so that we're all aware of parliamentary procedures for nominations, we have a couple nominations, just so we're all aware. We take the first one first. We vote on that. If we do not have a majority, then we will move to the second nomination. If we do not have a majority on that, we can move forward to consideration of future nominations. Candidates, I mean, council members may vote for either way, affirmative or negative, for the first nomination. Again, if that person does not receive a majority, that then is final and done. Then we consider wholly the second nomination, and all council members may vote in the affirmative or the negative for that, and so on and so on. Does that make sense? Everybody clear? Any questions? Okay, just want to make sure we're all aware. So, we have Hillary McIsaac as the first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
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 Okay. So, we have four affirmative and four in the negative. Do you have that? Do you need to?
Do you need a second?
Okay, so affirmative.
Do you want discussion?
Let me back up real quick. Is there any discussion on Hillary McIsaac? I jumped the gun, I apologize. Any discussion?
Real quick, Mayor Protem, I had a fantastic conversation with Hillary. She reached out to me and was very, you would say, on fire for that position. She's got some young children and she, you know, she, children of all ages that are involved in different activities, and they've been adamant, they've been using our Parks and Recreation system. And she explained to me, you know, she said, "It's not just about the ball field, she has a problem with choosing the ball fields," but she said, "There's other aspects," and looks at it as a holistic approach, that there's so much to be done. I think that we would put, if we were to vote in the affirmative for Hillary, she got me very excited when we were on the phone. She had said she had spoken with other members of the council and was just kind of, as an impromptu interview, I just really had a great conversation, had a lot of faith in what she presented. And it was a situation where she explained to me, she said, "You know, when I'll be making decisions and reviewing and voting and supporting, I'll have kids that will be involved in the systems too for many years, many different years." And so, I, of those, I think all the applications are great, but I would certainly support her as that, for that position.
If I may add, Mayor, I had a conversation with her as well, and she is the only one that called me interested in the position, so why I'm supporting.
Any further discussion? All right, let's go back and then vote again. So, all in the affirmative, say aye, with a sign of your hand raised. All opposed? Okay, so that is four to four, and that means that there is not a majority, so we'll move on to the second nomination, which is Lori Marine. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have some discussion. I base my decision on Ms. Marine from a number of reasons. The first one, recently in this council, there's been a call for unity, and I really want to make a point of, that people know that I heard that call. And to that end, I look at the city council and the city staff as subjects to commit to that unity, and I noticed on Ms. Marine's reference list was the director of Parks and Rec herself. And I wish, city council, city manager Buston shared with me an email of Ms. Richardson's recommendations, and I, in the spirit of looking for unity, I wanted to honor that intent and vote for Ms. Marine.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Also, I met with Lori Marine yesterday as well over, over this. I had not heard from any other applicants, and she too has kids in the schools, in the system, in the school system, and are very involved in Parks and Rec. She's been very involved in Parks and Rec herself, being involved in the soccer board, and that, those are the reasons why I would support her.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to echo that. We put an awful lot of emphasis just last week on the expertise of our city staff, and since we have a professional reference from our director of Parks and Recreation for Ms. Marine, Mrs. Marine, I would heartily endorse that nomination.
All right, great. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye with a show of hands.
We have a question, precisely. Are we, what is voting-wise, are we, are we allowed to vote for the next?
Yes, we are. So, it's a clean slate, it's a new nomination, and all council members are allowed to vote in the affirmative or the negative of the choosing for this candidate. Are there any questions regarding that? Great. All right, all in favor, say aye with a show of hands.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay, all right.
Not necessarily opposed, but I'm voting yes.
Certainly, we appreciate that and respect that. So, Lori Marine will then be on our consent agenda for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board positions. And it is worth noting that we had 14 very qualified candidates, and we appreciate everyone who took the time to share with us their desires and expertise in wanting to be on this board, and we have several coming up, and hope that everybody continues to stay engaged. All right, next on our agenda is the burn ordinance discussion. Councilperson Griswold.
Yes, thank you. I would like to ask that the city staff, assuming the council agrees, prepare an ordinance, and some basic wording would be that open burning within the city limits of Auburn, Alabama is prohibited, and that exceptions could be made in the case of natural disasters in case we need to do a big burn for disposal or whatnot, and that could be approved by the mayor. And the reason I'm bringing this up, it was generated by citizen input to me, by citizens not only in my ward but in others, and specific instances that were brought up had to do with burning in the vicinity of Auburn High School along Sanford, and that there had been complaints about the potential adverse effects. And also, I received a call today from a former city councilman, Mrs. Tremaine, that had noticed that this was on the agenda for tonight, and she wanted me to know that she had had complaints in the past about similar issues, so it's not just, just something that's just popped up recently. And overall, I believe, you know, that Auburn has progressed past the point of a local county-type organization or county-type community. I don't think it's really appropriate in a municipal area like ours. And if anything that we can do to emphasize beautifying Auburn, make it more environmentally friendly, and move Auburn forward a bit, add a little bit of sophistication, and possibly alleviate some potential risks to the city. The current ordinance, as it reads, has, a permit is required, and contractors are allowed to burn a pile of wood or debris the size of an automobile, supposed to be put out at 3:00 every afternoon, supposed to be attended the entire time, and it's, it's burning. And so, that's, that's kind of what I'd like to change, is just simply do away with it altogether. So, I believe that that's something that the citizens have, some citizens have brought forward to me, and I'd like to have the council consider that. Thank you.
In saying that, I would also like to say, you know, I'm just, I guess, confused because I thought there was something in place for burning in the city of Auburn.
There is. We have a burn ordinance.
We do?
Yes, we do have a burn ordinance.
What are you asking? Are you asking to revise it or something, or?
It's okay to continue to address this.
Oh, yes, we're, yes.
All right. I'm asking that the current ordinance be overridden and started, and that a new ordinance be put in place of it prohibiting burning outright within the city limit. Instead of having to apply for a permit and having being, large burns being done on-site, I think that contractors or developers or even residents should find another way to dispose of their excess lumber and timber waste, perhaps chipping, perhaps removal. Eliminate open burning within the city.
So, Jim, do you need a motion from Councilperson Griswold to ask you to have an ordinance brought before us, and do you need a majority vote from the council to take those actions?
He would make an, he would make a motion that the council, that
Sorry, that you come back with everything?
And there has to be a second, then there has to be a vote. Either failure of a second or failure of the vote, then there's, nothing else happens, or there is a second and you all vote for it, and then we will have to come up with the ordinance. Something like this, we'd probably come back at the next meeting, it may be a month, maybe the next meeting, after the next meeting, but in a very short time, we'll come back with an ordinance.
Okay, so are you making a motion that we, as a council, vote to determine if, to send this to the city manager to bring back an ordinance for us to approve or not approve?
That is correct. I'd like to propose to the city council that we ask the staff at our direction to propose, to develop an ordinance to prohibit open burning within the city limits of Auburn, Alabama, and to make an exception in that ordinance in the case of natural disasters that could be overridden by the mayor.
Can I ask a question?
Well, let's get a second, and then we can have discussion. How's that sound? I mean, we've been, I think he's discussed what he's seeking, made the motion.
Yes.
Since we have a motion on the floor, we need a second or not, and then we can go to discussion. And then we'll take a vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, let's go into discussion.
Quickly, how will this, how will this affect regular citizen homeowners that like to enjoy making smores in their backyard with their kids over open fire? It sounds like that'd be outlawed, correct?
Well, I mean, open burning, again, like I said, it's one of those things that we'd have to study. You look at it, it seems simplicity just to ban burning in the city of Auburn, but what does that mean, and how many things are, are subject to, to being outside the ordinance? I would imagine that something like that, we would have to, yeah, we'd have to study, we'd have to see if, what constitutes open burning. You know, are one of these fireplaces, fire, gas fireplaces, is that open burning? If you have a little, maybe some, some coals in your, in your barbecue and you're making smores, is that open burning?
Darko Grill, when you grill on that side of it.
Right.
That's an open flame.
Right.
Well, how does, how does the, our current ordinance compare to Opelika's, our sister city?
Councilman Parsons can probably answer that better, but it's much more liberal, it's much more liberal than ours.
More liberal?
Yes.
What's the population difference between Opelika and Auburn, if you might know?
Auburn's about, population, I'd say Auburn's about 65,000, Opelika's probably 40, 45 maybe.
Councilman Smith, would you like me to speak in detail about the comparison?
Okay.
Sure.
In Opelika, we have, on our website, you can visit the burn, burn permit ordinance. There are two, two degrees of burn permits. One is residential burns, and one is contractor burning. The, the amount of material burnt is smaller with the residential, obviously. The fire has to be put out at night, it's a complaint-driven ordinance. If a neighbor or a homeowner in the vicinity is disturbed by either the smoke or the debris falling onto their pool or their car, they call the fire department, and we are obliged to go and put it out. It's something that I deal with nearly on a daily basis, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief Langford, or if I may speak to city manager Buston, it's a similar type of complaint-driven situation here in Auburn, right? If somebody complains?
If someone complains, yes, that, then we will, we will address the complaint. It is, and I'm sorry, I was, I was mistaken on the population, according to David, he told me, the population of Opelika's 30,240, according to the Census Bureau. So, yes, the, it is complaint-driven. Now, we don't, our ordinance pretty much eliminates burning in residence. Residential burning is all but eliminated in, in our ordinance, so we don't even address that.
Right. And we also have distinction as well for recreational burning in a container such as a barrel or a fire pit, and that is permitted.
Have we had any, I mean, in the fire, has the fire department received an increase in complaints? I mean, do we have, what are our experts in the city that work in fire?
Not to my knowledge, we don't. I mean, every once in a while, we will get a complaint about a burn, especially if it, if it's left to burn at night. If it, most time, if they follow the rules, then we don't get a complaint. But we don't also have that many permits being issued. I think at the time I looked, we had approximately 14 for the year, maybe 20, 14 to 20 for the year, and those are usually big construction projects, big swaths of land that are being ready for construction. Now, we have had a couple of complaints from residents that were trying to burn leaves and that illegally, and of course, those are not allowed, so, but that's already not allowed in the ordinance.
We did decide to go on the ordinance. How did it affect university property? Because I had a complaint in my ward, but it was coming from university property.
It wouldn't affect university property, nor does it affect the county. So, and we have had complaints of, more so in the past, when there was more pasture land around us, that when they burn the pasture, we get the smoke.
Or that would, that would be a problem for, because I have so many areas that are not in the city, in the city limits, but are
Right.
Surrounded by the city.
We're surrounded by county area, right. And kind of piecemeal, like a, like a jigsaw puzzle.
University has a big project going on, longleaf.
Right.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to readdress it. No one else has a comment?
Well, I gotta come in. I think that even when you do the ordinance, an ordinance would be common sense, you know, so it'd address every issue. I mean, it may be comparable with the ones that we already have in place, so, you know, I'm quite sure somebody around the table discussing every little details, but there have been complaints even on construction sites in my ward. And, you know, maybe people maybe think that they have permits. I'm surprised that that's all been issued. So, just doing the, when you think about this, it's, it's just gonna be common sense.
Sounds like we're looking to ban it altogether, not, not, you know, not, not picking shoes or try to rewrite specific areas to be done, and you may want to readdress that, but as, as presented right now, we're banning it in the city of Auburn, and, you know, it sounds like we don't have a proliferation of rogue fires already. We've got a pretty stringent burn ordinance in place that restricts 500 feet from a structure.
500 feet from a structure.
You know, so that, that's why
A habitable, a habitable structure.
Habitable structure, and that's why it basically eliminates most residential spots. So, we're really talking about some of our major developments in, in town. I work on Sanford Avenue, and I have no doubt that there were some complaints near the high school or somewhere around there, but I haven't been overwhelmed by, by fire over at Sanford, but that's, that's just my perception. My concern with banning it on construction sites like that is the increase in developmental cost, and what's that gonna do to, you know, to development costs that we already are seeing? You know, we have concerns over projects bid, you know, in town that are over budget because it's, it's, you know, we're restrictive in some areas, and people charge more to do, do business in Auburn. So, if they're gonna have to haul out dozens of additional dump load trucks of, of debris, that's gonna increase developmental cost. We're gonna add dump trucks and 18-wheelers to our streets, messing up our streets, clogging our traffic, breaking window, you know, windows and windshield with debris that, you know, that's not our fault, I'm just saying, that's the additional problems that we're creating by trying to restrict some burning that doesn't seem to be a huge problem. Not saying it's not a problem, I mean, not a, not a prolific problem. So, I hate to see, you know, additional pollution from the dump trucks driving up and down the road dozens of times, all for, you know, a bonfire. So, that's my only, my only issue there. So, I don't think we've, we've got a pretty restrictive, restrictive ordinance in place already.
Okay. Yeah, there's no intent, certainly, to keep Councilman Smith from cooking smores. I know he loves that. So, perhaps the wording is a bit severe, and perhaps that's what the staff could help us out with. Currently, there is not residential burning, so obviously that wouldn't be a concern. Perhaps it should say, open burning on construction sites would be more specific. I think that would be very appropriate. As far as the costs, it's not like Auburn is overly concerned about the putting hardships on contractors already. We, we certainly let them do most anything they choose. So, yeah, it would cost them. Yeah, I agree with you on that. But the, the trade-off is, you know, do you want smoke drifting over to the high school? The trade-off is, do you want us to look like we're a developing community or a mature community? So, again, that's, understand that the city has not received a large number of complaints on this. Perhaps it's because the people choose to contact their council members instead of the city. So, I can't speak for what the city has received or not received. I've received complaints, and I'm speaking up on behalf of those that made those complaints, and if the council chooses to proceed, that's the council's prerogative. If they choose not to proceed, that's equally the prerogative. So, thank you.
Three years ago, I actually had to call the city because there was some burning happening in a development that is building out behind my house, and when I called and asked the city manager at the time to check into it, I was told that they would go out and look at the situation, and they ended up citing the developer because they were not following the protocols that they were supposed to be following. And then they were also asked not to continue burning. So, I believe that our, I personally believe with personal experience, and I did not have any, any further incidents after those complaints and those enforcements that occurred after the complaint, that based on our current, current burn ordinance, we are very stringent, and there, I mean, it even gets down to when winds are in excess of five miles an hour, overcast or periods of rain, and even to the types of materials that can't be burned. So, I believe that with diligence and with our current burn ordinance, I'm not apt to want to change just to change when we don't see a proliferation of issues, and I don't know how our city can respond to situations if they're not aware of them and only, only we as a council member are aware of it. So, is there any further discussion before we choose to, I mean, before we make our vote? All right. All in favor of moving forward and having the city manager come back with an ordinance for us to consider regarding an amended burn ordinance? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So, we will not move forward with that request. Any questions on the agenda for the city manager? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. We are past the 7 o'clock hour, so we can move into our regular agenda. Lindsay, may we have a call to order? Johnson?
Here.
Nixon?
Here.
Griswold?
Here.
Hogan?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
Taylor?
Here.
Witten?
Here.
Andrews. If we would please have a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. All right, we have mayor and council communications. Under mayor communications, I do have several, so if you'll bear with me. It has been a tough and arduous week, somber and sad, and as many of us know and have experienced the news of the weekend that we have lost an officer and had to wounded in, so, since the mayor is not able to be here because he is, and has planned to celebrate and attend his daughter's graduation, which is Auburn High's graduation this evening, which is also being aired. For those who are maybe watching us, they can watch that at the same time. But Mayor Andrews is not here this evening because he's at Auburn High's graduation, celebrating the daughter, celebrating his daughter's graduation. Celebrating his daughter's graduation. But I would like to read his statement that he put out in regard to the situation that unfolded Sunday evening, and this is from Mayor Anders. "Our heart goes out today to the family and loved ones of Officer Will Beekner, who was tragically lost Sunday night in the line of duty. Words are not sufficient to express our grief as we mourn the senseless loss of one of our own. Please pray for his family, his loved ones, and his friends. Please pray for the men and women of his other family, the Auburn Police Division, and please pray for the quick and complete recovery of his colleagues, Officers Evan Elliott and Mark Sistrunk, who were wounded in the line of duty. We have never before had to face the loss of a police officer in the line of duty. We honor Officer Beekner's unwavering courage and that of his injured brothers in arms. Because of the hard work of the men and women of the Auburn Police Division, we can rest knowing that the person who is alleged to be the responsible person for this act is in custody. Even as they grappled with their loss, our men and women in blue and their colleagues throughout the East Alabama law enforcement community worked tirelessly through the night to find the man responsible. We thank them for their service. I ask our community to come together to mourn and to heal, to come together to respect the privacy of these families as they do the same, to come together to be the Auburn family we have always been." Mayor Anders. Also would like to acknowledge that many mayors from surrounding communities, especially Tuscaloosa, Birmingham, other area municipalities, even outside of the state of Alabama, have reached out to the mayor and the mayor's office to offer their support and their condolences. Also, Governor Ivey issued the lowering of the flags at half-staff through Saturday, May 25th, and as you notice as you ride around town, they have been lowered. And then the funeral arrangements have been determined to be Friday, May 24th, at the Auburn Arena. The visitation time is 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and the service will be from 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., again at Auburn Arena. And then following the ending of his service, they will... We will have a full police escort to Town Creek, where he will be interned, and they will travel, and correct me if I'm wrong, travel Donahue, down Magnolia, and down Gay Street to allow for residents, citizens, visitors to show their support and line the streets as they travel to Town Creek. Also, Auburn University Federal Credit Union has an account set up for donations, so if anybody is wanting to make a donation, they can make those to the William Beekner Memorial Fund, and that is again at Auburn University Federal Credit Union. And I know that many of us have been working tirelessly to show our support, and we are deeply wounded, and I know, Chief, you had some things that you would like to say.
I'd like to honor Officer Beekner tonight, and also keep in our prayers Officer Sistrunk, Officer Elliott. I remember when Officer Beekner was hired, we called him Beak. He was hired, I think, in 2006 by Chief DeGraffrey, and I was a lieutenant, and he was on my shift for a while. He wasn't like your regular police officer. He was a very kind... Not that police officers aren't kind, but he was an extremely kind and gentle man. I can never remember addressing him, he didn't have a smile on his face. No matter what he was going through or what we were facing, I could say, "Hey, Beak, how's it going today?" And he'd greet me with a smile, say, "Fine, sir, how are you?" Very respectful, dedicated young man. And I know, no matter what you think about police officers, nobody deserved to go out like he went out Sunday evening. There was absolutely no excuse for what happened. He was only doing his job and taking from his life way too early. He left behind two children, one of which I think was about a 15-month-old son, daughter. Tragic situation, I'm at a loss for words. Officer Sistrunk, I worked with him as well. Again, a very respectful, dedicated young man. I can't think of two more dedicated men than we had than Officer Beekner and still have an Officer Sistrunk. Officer Elliott was... Has been hired since I started here. I think he's been here almost a year, not quite a year. But I got to meet him at the hospital the other night. Also got to see Officer Beak... I got to see Beak one last time, and it's something you never really want to see, but I had to see him. Please keep his family in your prayers, and please keep the police division in your prayers. I live out near where this happened, where it occurred, and Sunday night I heard sirens go by my house. I heard them twice, and I've been doing it long enough to know a police car from an ambulance. I knew something was wrong, bad wrong, for them to be responding like they were responding as fast as they were, and two of them went by. So I immediately... Being an old police officer, you never get away from it. I had to turn my scanner on and see what was going on, and what I heard sent chills down my spine. I heard Lieutenant Morris on the radio, I believe, the supervisors, and I was in horror of what I was hearing, what was happening. All right, we're performing CPR on an officer, and I just... I can't tell you how it feels. The worst thing as a supervisor... And I want you to pray for the supervisors as well as sergeants, and lieutenants, and captains, and assistant chiefs, and chiefs. That's your worst fear as a supervisor, to lose one of your men. When I was a lieutenant, I spent most of my career in narcotics, because I was lieutenant in patrol for a while. Officer Morris was on my shift as well. And one thing I always wanted to ensure was that my guys got home the next day, went home to see their family. And I know each one of them worked very hard to do the same thing, so don't blame yourselves. You blame an evil person. Had to be evil to do what he did. But at the same time, I think about his family. Not only has he messed up several families here at the police division and the whole city, but think about what that man's family's going through tonight. It's horrible. And, uh, so the next time you want to complain about an officer... We're not always perfect. We make mistakes. Officers make mistakes in their career, but tell me another profession where you got five seconds to make a decision that's gonna be discussed for the rest of your life, for the rest, throughout history. They make decisions on a dime, and they get second guessed from now on. So think about that the next time you deal with an officer. We're not perfect, but we... It's the one profession where you may be required to give your life, and he gave his life Sunday night, so that this town could be safe and be a safer place. Nothing we can do can bring him back, and we can honor his memory. And as Mayor Protem stated, we're gonna have the funeral at the arena Friday, and then the procession will go down Donahue to Magnolia to Gay Street. And I encourage you to tell your friends, your neighbors, and anyone else that is able to do it, come out and pay tribute to him as we drive by with his last ride. And, uh, just want to say my thoughts and prayers with all the guys tonight. It's not something you ever get over, and I can't tell you enough what it feels like when you're a supervisor and you lose one of your men like that or women. It's just... I was there when his wife came in, and Dr. broken news to her, and it's something you never want to see. You never want to see. Had to call his dad in New York, and I want to commend the city for flying him back here immediately. City's been wonderful, the city staff, been great. Appreciate all your support. The community's been unbelievable. Police officers from all over the country have called, so all the country will be at the funeral, I'm sure. It's, uh... You know, in the last... Since February, we've had four officers shot, and I can't tell you how close Officer Sanders came to losing his life. For the good Lord above, he would have. Officer Sistrunk had a severe wound. This is a blessing, and Officer Elliott shot in the arm, could easily have been shot through the chest, this is easily. So, uh, just please keep them all in your prayers, keep the families in your prayers, and I just... If you can just try to get a glimpse and think about it when you go to bed tonight, what it would mean to lose one of your brothers in blue or your sisters, if this case happened to be one of my brothers. And it makes it extremely hard when it's such a good man. Officer Beak was just... I don't care what you asked him to do, he was willing to do it. I know I'm running on, but I'm sorry, I gotta pay tribute to the man. He was... His smile was contagious. I could be having a bad day as chief of police and come walk down to patrol, check on everybody and talk to everybody. He always, 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 always smiled, said, "How are you today, sir?" And I just... He didn't have a mean bone in his body. He was just a genuinely good man that wanted to help people. Officer Sistrunk's the same way. I mean, just two high-quality officers. We're very fortunate to have him in Auburn. Just please keep us all in your prayers, the APD family, and more importantly, their families. Because I can imagine what they're going through, but I can't really know what a family's going through for something like that. It's the one thing you dread. We've never lost... We've lost an officer back in the 20s and 30s, I believe, from chasing a person and dropped dead with a heart attack. We've never lost one to violence like that, with a gun violence, and it's tough to think, to accept. But Bible says, "All things work together for good, then love the Lord," and we all love the Lord here at Auburn Police Division, and we'll get through it with the community's help and the good Lord's help. But, uh, please remember some Friday, pray for us all, and I encourage you to come out and invite everybody you can to come out and be there when he takes his last ride through town. Funeral as well. Visitation, like you said, is from 11 to 2. Funeral from 2 to 3, and, uh, if we can give him a proper funeral that he deserves. Thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you. Additionally, would anybody else like to speak to Sunday's incident?
Mayor Protem?
Yeah.
If you allow me, I can give you an update on Officer Sistrunk and Officer Elliott.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
So Officer Sistrunk had surgery at Piedmont Hospital in Columbus. He has been taken out of ICU and is recovering, and he is expected to have a full recovery. Officer Elliott was released the night that he was shot. He was shot in the arm, and he also is expected to make a full recovery.
Not to make a hard shift in announcements, we also have a couple of meetings that are scheduled for this week. Tomorrow evening, we have a short-term rental task force meeting at 5:30 at the Harris Center. And then on Thursday at 3:00 p.m., we have our traffic study presentation in the city meeting room. And of course, you can find all meeting dates and times on our website. We also have this evening Auburn High's graduation, so congratulations to the class of 2019, not only at Auburn High, but all area schools. And then on Monday, as we move into Memorial Day, we all have the traditional mayor's Memorial Day breakfast Monday morning at 8:00 a.m. at the Hotel and Conference Center. And I believe that's all the announcements, other than today is also my daughter's 11th birthday, so if she's watching. Happy birthday, Caroline. Any other announcements from the council?
Ward 2 will have its... Ward 2 meeting on the 30th at 6:00. And our new location for this one will be the library, so those of you who have attended in the past, we have a new venue for this one. The general topic will be short-term rentals, and the city has declined to provide staff support, so we do have a task force member, Bob Parsons, council member, who will be attending and be joining us. So that'll be the main topic. 6:00 in the library. Thank you.
Other announcements? Okay. I skipped over the committee of the whole, but many of you are here for that, and we did make a nomination for Lori Marine to take the Parks and Recreation Board position, and we will do that in the consent agenda, and then we had a discussion on the burn ordinance.
Can I... Before we close out?
Yes.
The gravity of what happened on Sunday, I just can't go without thanking all... I know several in my professional... In my profession and just being on city council, I know several Auburn police officers for all... Working all different shifts and doing all different things, from working the beat to working in the school system. They are... We are blessed in this city for the level of professionalism that our officers are and are to our citizens, to our best citizens, to our worst citizens. I just... I want to tell each officer that I support them, and that as long as I'm on council, I will make sure we do the best for them. To Officer Beekner's family, I cannot even imagine what you're going through, but this council stands with you, the city stands with you. To the other officers, I pray for a speedy recovery. One of the things... One of the things about safety and security is it's not free, it's not cheap, and it doesn't just happen. And I am very, very thankful. I'm thankful for myself, for my wife, and for my kids that we live in such a safe place, and that is because of our police department.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, another hard shift. It's... No, it's all good. Auburn University Communications, do we have anyone from Auburn University? I know we are back, I believe, in session. And we also have Camp War Eagle, which is starting, and so you'll see lots of new, fresh faces coming in for orientations across the summer months. And so, as you see new faces, welcome them to Auburn and congratulate them on choosing one of the best universities, if not the best university in the country, as their home. Citizens Communications, this is a time where we invite citizens to speak on items on the agenda, and you have five minutes, and if there's anybody that would like to come up and speak on an item on the agenda, now is your time.
Something that was discussed under committee of the whole, the visiting appropriate...
Sure, it's on the agenda, yes.
First of all, I'd like to particularly thank Mr. Dawson for his heartfelt remarks. I know you've worked closely with policemen, and your heart is in it, and I can certainly tell from your remarks, so... And it was very eloquent, so thank you for expressing that. I think we all appreciated that, and the committee... The community is grieving. There's no way we can imagine what those families are going through. Kind of all pertaining to the burn ordinance, throughout that discussion, I really didn't hear the issue of health brought up, and people who have experienced... And I speak from experience on this, people who have undergone radiation treatments for throat cancer, smoke is a huge irritant for those people, and it literally makes them sick. And if you've had... Been treated by radiation for throat cancer, it is a health issue. And to not be able to sit on your own back porch and have smoke wafting over every single evening from debris being burned, I think that's a consideration. So just wanted to chime in about that. The other thing is, we like to think of ourselves as a forward-looking city where the environment is important to us, and we are really talking about air pollution here. And I don't think that we should say, "Oh, the poor developers, this is gonna run their cost up." We're talking about air pollution. That is what we're talking about. So I'm grateful that Mr. Griswold... I didn't realize this was on the agenda before I showed up here tonight, but I'm grateful that he brought this up, and I think we might, perhaps should revisit it and bring into the discussion the air pollution. This is everybody's air and the health concerns. Because in my own little house, last month, a neighbor was lighting up debris every single evening, and the first time it happened, I thought, "Oh, well, I'm just not gonna fuss about that." And then a week, it was happening every single evening, and I did not call the city and bug them with it. I went to my neighbor and said, "My husband's throat is being irritated every single evening, and he can't..." and he cannot, he's going to lose his voice. And my neighbor said, I had no idea. And he quit. And, but people don't think about that. They don't. So anyway, there's my two cents. Thank you.
Anyone else for items on the agenda?
We have two copies, so you guys can pass this around. It's not signed, but. I meant not councilman, but Jim has signed copies. Lindbergh B. Jackson, 814 North College. I want to speak to the, what's happened over the weekend as well. All of our African-American community churches are, are praying, and we are coming together to see what we can do to help support you guys. So as I've spoken with different ones, it's, it's a tragedy for us all. So I'd just like to, Chief, I, I express to you my sincere condolences because you had served with that person. It's like a brother or a sister. I lost a brother and his wife in an automobile accident back in the eighties. And this council that was there, my parents were struggling. They showed the grace and the hospitality that you guys are showing. So I know that there's heartfelt feelings in each one of you all. But speaking to the issue of virtue of God by faith, showers of blessings, you've heard me come before you guys in the previous council numerous number of times. And in the end, I said to you all that it was never the wrong time to do the right thing. I want to commend you once again on what you've done, how you've moved forward, even though there's a little bit of a controversy about my position there. I still stand by everything that I said about Richmond Road and what goes on out there for the citizens at large. Irregardless of what's happened or what's been said in an email, I think you guys did the right thing. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
My wife spoke about my throat condition here earlier. I have done a developer, I have, you know, had subdivisions developed, and we pushed up the trees and they burned them. And, you know, that's been the accepted practice for many, many decades. I regretted it the last time I did it, actually. But there are other options now. We don't have to burn everything that comes up. If you look at the East Sanford project, a lot of those, a lot of the debris was actually ground. DJ Enterprises runs a grinding operation for the city. The city carries stuff to them, they grind it. They have the equipment to grind. Other companies have the equipment to grind. There are other options. So I would really like for you to look at Mr. Griswold's proposal in deeper depth as to options and alternatives to burning it. Because burning it is not doing anything but polluting the world and causing people like me a little additional grief. And, you know, I, you know, I probably have more grief from people burning off their pine forest, foresters that manually burn them. Because the burning the pine tars is worse than burning hardwood debris, to me. But I, I would really like for the city to look at some alternatives. It's not that much more expensive to burn it, I mean, to grind it than it is to burn it. And we live in an area between the Piedmont Plateau and the upper coastal plain and terrain. And the area of transition, especially in the upper coastal plain and south, has huge erosion gullies all over this area that would be, you know, an ideal place to dispose of this waste rather than just burn it. You know, it would create a barrier to further erosion and actually be an improvement to our earth by doing so. So, you know, and the, the ground, all of the ground material is recyclable. You know, the city recycles it, you know, on a huge program now. So, and the rest of it could certainly be recycled. So, and I, I hate to put the additional burden on the developer, being one myself, but I, I would like for the city to at least look at that as in addition to, you know, I'm grateful we have a burn on us. As she said, we have a neighbor that causes me a problem, but I think she corrected it the other day. So, but I just wanted to let you look, please look at it a little deeper. It's not just inexpensive to our friends and me and other people, but there are alternatives to burning it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Notes for citizens communications on agenda items. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to city managers' communications.
Mayor Protem, under city managers' communications, our first order of business this evening is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, item 8B.
That's the Community Development Block Grant.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I believe Mr. Par, I mean, Councilperson Parsons had some questions on the minutes. This will be the time.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry for my clumsy first, first offer.
Would you like to pull that agenda so we can?
Yes, please.
Okay, so 8A for the minutes. Sounds like we have some corrections or discussion. 8B?
If we're pulling B, do we need to also pull D1? Isn't that, aren't those two connected?
I mean, I don't know. The two are, the two are linked.
Those, those are linked, correct?
Yes.
City manager.
Pardon me?
Those two linked, isn't that right?
They are linked.
All right.
I'd like to pull items 8G1 and 8G2 for the sole purpose of providing information to the public.
Certainly. All right, so I'm hearing 8A, 8B, 8D1, and then 8G, as in George, 1 and 2. Any other items? All right, city manager?
So the first item is the minutes.
Thank you, Jim. I wanted to, the attention, the.
May we have a motion in a second, and then we'll go into discussion to approve the minutes? So do I have a motion to approve the minutes? And then we have a discussion, I mean?
So moved.
Yeah, okay. Second?
Second.
All right, now discussion.
Thank you.
Yes.
I wanted to speak to the order of which the, the agenda items fell on May 7, 2019. I noticed that the order conflicts with my memory. Item number 11, other business, actually happened after item 12 and before item 13.
Say that one more time for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Or for us?
In the minutes of May 7, 2019, under item number 11, other business, the, the matter that was written here under other business actually occurred after the citizens' open forum, item 12, and before adjournment, item 13.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know what's required of us to adjust.
Normally, we would have just introduced the minutes or the adoption of the minutes. Does anyone have any corrections or additions? You make the corrections or additions, and then you adopt it as corrected or add it.
Okay. All right.
I think the best way to do it would be have a motion to adopt the minutes as Councilperson Parsons has amended them.
All right, anyone?
I'd like to move that.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of, are there any additions or corrections?
We're saying we're going to make 11, 12, and 12, 11, basically.
Yes, sir.
Just for my question, these are chronological, I'm assuming, once you get to the end for new business and other business and citizens', is that, is it listed chronologically, or is that just information filled in as to what occurred during that period of time?
The minutes should list it as what occurred in, in the order it occurred.
Okay, so it should be chronological?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, are there any additional corrections or amendments to the minutes? Because we have also minutes for May the 9th as well.
We can take those separately because of the, of the correction to the first one.
So we have a motion in a second for the May 7 minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes for May 7th, as corrected by Councilperson Parsons, has been approved. Are there any corrections or amendments for the minutes of May 9th? If none, may I have a motion? I'm sorry.
I do have a question about that one. I don't know if it's necessary to amend them or not. I just need to ask a question.
Okay.
Time to do that? Okay. On the page, the second page says that Councilperson Smith clarified that the vote is for voter-approved projects at Carywood School in Drake. At the time of this meeting, those were not voter-approved projects, they were proposed for voter approval. Just a clarification. Is that, am I correct on that, Councilman Smith?
Are we getting in semantics of what was?
You clarified that the vote is for voter-approved projects. That's not what we did at the time. We were voting, decide when to vote on if and when we would have voter-approved projects. My point is, the point, the projects were not approved at that time.
I see what you're, I see where, I think you could look at it both ways. The, the projects are to be voter-approved.
To be, yes, they are to be.
Right. And the way it was said, it could be to be voter-approved, or you could look at it as projects that had already been approved. I, I can see it both ways, but I think, well, I can't.
What if, what if it just says, the vote is regarding?
That's fine.
I, I move that we amend to add, to strike is for and add regarding. I need a second.
And I'm happy with it.
Your motion is to, is for to regarding?
To strike is for and to add regarding.
Okay. And I second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes for May 9th are approved.
Item 8B is the adoption of the amendment to the FY 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program.
Okay, I ask that that be removed from the consent agenda. I would like for.
You would need a.
We need a motion in a second, and then we can have discussion.
Okay.
For approval? Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I would like for item B to be discussed so that the public can understand what we are doing here. So, Mr. Boston, can you?
On this, on this particular item, we are adjusting the wording to allow us to include paying for sewer projects.
Under the Community Development?
Under the Community Development Block Grant. Since the original statement did not include sewer as a, as a potential candidate to be paid for through these fundings, this particular item is changing that to add that that is a viable candidate that we can pay for through these CDVG funds. And that does go to item D1, which is the payment of sewage, of a sewer hookup for the Habitat for Humanities houses that are being built, built near Westview Cemetery.
At the corner of Vidal Avenue and Foster Street?
Yes.
How many homes is it?
Seven or eight.
Nine.
Nine. Okay, nine houses.
Nine.
So that's neither seven nor eight.
Okay, so, oh, nine Habitat houses.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this is not going to affect what the block money has already been allocated for?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so are we still billing, how many Habitat, I mean, not Habitat, but houses on, what street is that? Yeah, on Tuck and Bird.
Seven houses there. Is that what you're asking? How many?
Yeah, yeah. How many homes? Okay, so the same seven homes going on there. Because I, you know, when we, when we, we had the packet meeting, it was discussed that there was only going to be six, and we voted on, that, we voted in the last meeting about six. So it is seven.
We voted in what meeting it was six?
Well, that's what we was, that was the discussion that we had at the packet meeting.
But we did not vote on anything? Oh, you're saying that we would be voting on? But this evening, we're only voting on an amendment to?
Yeah, I got that.
Okay.
I understand, staying now. I was just trying to correct what was said in the packet meeting.
Six was over at Westview Cemetery, wasn't it?
What we were discussing at, at the packet meeting was Westview, was the Habitat houses. And I incorrectly evidently said there are nine. I said there were going to be seven or eight. And that's what we were discussing at the packet meeting, not, not the houses that we were building, not the seven houses.
So this is a reallocation based on a budgetary timeframe that we're reusing for sewage based on Habitat for Humanity homes?
Yes. So, so, and that's, now that's not, item 8B is simply changing in wording. What the humanity, the sewage for the Habitat for Humanity homes is actually 8D1. Those are two separate items there. We cannot do 8D1 without first doing, changing 8B to include paying for sewage.
Jim, if I may, if I may.
Yes, certainly.
As I understood it, too, it was a, the motivation that led you to this decision was the fear that this money would not be, would not have a name put on it, and therefore we would risk losing it.
And we would lose it. Yeah, so these are federal funds, and we have to wait, we have to plan for them ahead of time before we get the money, and then we have to wait on the money for the federal government to give it to us. And then we have a certain amount of time that we have to spend the money, or we lose it. And so, it's a perfect storm. We got our money late. This is a project we could spend it on, or we would lose it. And let me make sure that I'm telling you correctly. I'm going to ask Al Davis to address that.
HUD doesn't always cooperate with us. Our funding year for our CDVG program starts June 1st of every year, and it goes until May 31st of the following year. Our funding this past year, we didn't get notification until last September that our, our action plan was accepted and that we have been funded. We did not get the release of funds for, for that CDVG grant until February of this year. So you can see, that done leave us a lot of time to get our projects completed. And there is a timeliness test that HUD has put in place where we have to spend money, and a, and a certain amount of that money has to be spent by the 1st of April. So this was really a good project for us to be able to move those dollars to a project that had already been included in our action plan last year. There was dollars already sitting there. And so we needed additional dollars to complete this project, because when it came in, the bid came in, it came in a little bit, it came in higher than what we had put in the budget last year. So it really worked out well for us, was able to just move those funds over. Now this year, when we get ready to build the houses, when our, when our new budget year starts June 1st, we'll just move that money back into housing. So we'll be ready to build the houses. We hope we'll start on them sometime this fall.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes?
Jim, is the, is the money allocated for this project, will, is that the total monies? Is there, will there be a remainder of money that we lose, or is that?
No, that, that $140,000, for this particular project, that money is the total for the, well, I'm going back to D1. The $147,691 is the total amount for that project, for the sewer project.
There's no balance remaining of CDVG money?
Not, not, I mean, no. As Mr. Davis said, when it comes time for the houses, then we just move the money back to the houses.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then item D1 is the Evergreen Erosion Control LLC contract for the sewer project in the amount of $147,000, $147,691.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just withdrew this because of the, and correlation would be.
I just withdrew this because of the, and correlation would be the adoption.
Great, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries?
Item 8G1 is a taxpayer penalty waiver for Health Information Designs LLC in the amount of $11,175.69. It should be noted that all back taxes, including interest, have been paid. The waiver is for the penalty portion only, and this particular company has not had a penalty waiver in the last three years.
Move for approval? Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries?
Item 8G2 is a taxpayer penalty waiver for AQ Auburn Balcony Apartments in the amount of $4,552.02. This item also is all the back taxes, including interest having paid, and the waiver is for the penalty amount only. This operation also has not had a penalty waiver.
Move for approval? Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Did you say AQ or SQ? You said AQ, but is it for, it's for SQ, right, Auburn?
SQ.
Thank you, yes.
Any further comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries?
I move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries?
Under ordinances this evening, we have item 9A is Links Crossing LLC requesting rezoning of 4.87 acres from rural to development district housing on property located south of Auburn Links, Auburn Links Crossing subdivision Phase 3. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item, and a public hearing is required.
I'll open the public hearing if anybody would like to come and speak to this ordinance. May I do so at this time? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
I'll introduce ordinance and ask unanimous consent. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Rizwal?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes, ma'am.
Arson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Baywood?
Yes.
Whit?
Yes.
Item 9B is an amendment to Article 4 and Article 7 for a purpose of including buffer yard standards for the newly created medium-density residential district and reflecting the requirement for conditional use approval for multiple unit development in the corridor redevelopment district west and east. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item, and a public hearing is required.
I'll open the public hearing, and if anybody would like to come forward and speak to this ordinance. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask unanimous consent. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Jim, if you would, just, could you briefly just walk through, this is some additional language. I know we've seen the Harper focus area, we've done some additional focus areas, and this is for the Glenn and Dean focus area. Am I correct in that?
Correct. This, this particular, and again, these two items go together, the two, next, this one, 9B and 9C. This particular one is simply the additional column, the MC.
MDRD.
MCRD column with, with the, the types of, of buffer with, with requirements in that table, and then only adding in Article 7 under Section A, the additional wording to, again, identify what it is that we're talking about.
Okay, so we are adding a column for MDRD, which is Medium Density Residential District, and then also under Article 8? Is it 8A?
Yes, Article 8A.
All right, the additional text for the.
You're adding the "and," and then you're adding, "and multiple unit development in the corridor redevelopment district," and then, again, the east and west.
Any further discussion or questions? Lindsey?
Dixon?
Yes.
Rizwal?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes, ma'am.
Arson?
Yes.
Smith? Yes, ma'am.
Baywood?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Item 9C are the zoning map amendments for purposes of rezoning properties in the Glenn Dean focus area study boundary. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item, and a public hearing is required.
Open the public hearing if anybody would like to come forward and speak to this ordinance. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, Lindsey?
Yes.
Toby?
Yes, ma'am.
Arson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Baywood?
Yes.
Whit?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, those are all the items we have on the agenda this evening.
All right, we have other resolutions, we have none other business. Is there any other business?
I have a question, please. I'd like to know the status of the land acquisition or search for Fire Station Number 6.
We have contacted a owner of some property. I'm not sure that we have finished negotiations on that yet. Public Safety is working on negotiations on the property.
All right, thank you. And one additional point. Earlier, I'd asked that the city manager approached the planning commission to consider additional protection for the historic district in terms of prohibiting ADDUs in the district or on property adjacent to the district, abutting the district, I believe the words were. The planning commission didn't fully address that. I wondered what we need to do to have, have them address that.
You would have to go through the same process you just did tonight, with the committee of the whole, have the council as a whole direct the staff to do it through a vote, basically just what you did tonight with the burden ordinance.
Okay. I'd have to go back and look at the minutes, but I thought we did that about two, two meetings ago, the, during the committee of the whole. The council agreed that we wanted the staff to address that, and I just, seems like we're on a do-loop once again on how we go about doing business.
So.
A little bit different guidance, depending on week to week, I think.
So is it a matter of interpretation from your perspective that they didn't address it, or did they address it not to your satisfaction?
They did not address, it was not on the agenda. It was never put on the agenda for discussion. It was brought up in their packet meeting, and that was the, the end of it. I think when the council directs some action, we ought to see some action. I don't think that happened. So if we need to do something additional to, to rekindle that fire, I'd appreciate it, and I'll do what we need to do procedurally. So if I just get a clear set of guidance on what the heck we're supposed to do, maybe we can get this either before the council again, if that's the necessary steps, or before the planning commission again, if that's the necessary steps. But I'd like to have it fully addressed.
Is it customary when we request the planning commission to look at something, is it required to be on as an agenda item? Is the packet meeting the place that they initiate that conversation? Walk us through how that is supposed to happen.
In this particular item, Mr. Cotton specifically told the council how he was going to deal with this. He said that he even equated it to an item that Councilperson Tremaine had brought up, and how he was going to bring it to them, to the planning commission at the packet meeting, and get their desire, what they wanted to do with it, and then report back to the council. That happened, and we did. So if you want to take up this issue again, you would have to go through the process that we just did tonight for the burden ordinance. You would go through the same process, put it on the committee of the whole, have a vote of the council, tell me what you wanted to do, and then it would go back through the planning commission.
So they followed the same procedures that they have in the past for other requests?
And, and, and Mr. Cotton did say that that's how it was going to be handled.
And that's not to your satisfaction?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
If you would, please put it on the agenda for the committee of the whole, for our next scheduled council meeting, and I'll bring it up again for the council's consideration.
Is the council in agreement with that direction for the city manager?
I am.
Yes.
Well, we already asked him to put it on there once, so I don't think there ought to be a.
I have no problem taking a look at it.
You have no problem?
No.
Okay, so if we may put it on the next committee of the whole.
Just talking about discussing it committee of the whole.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we'll add that to, you'll add that to, okay, thank you. Any other business?
Yes, I wanted also, I've asked for an update on the Rosenwall School, and I haven't gotten it. So can you give me some type of update as to where, where we're going with that?
We do. Staff have met. I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't remember getting a request for an update on the Rosenwall School, but staff has met with, among ourselves, we've met with the mayor, we've met with a gentleman whose name I can't remember right now. We have identified a piece of property that we think is where we would like the school. Again, we are in negotiations, or actually not negotiations yet, we're in contact with the owner of that property to see if we can purchase that property. We have some plans that we expect to bring to council. We show what we would like to see turned into a, not just a, an area that is dedicated to Rosa Parks, but could also be maybe dedicated as an African-American museum focusing on, on that area of Auburn, the northwest area of Auburn, and, and a museum that would, that would facilitate that. And again, I, I want to ask Al Davis to comment on that. He has done a lot of work on this particular project.
Did not receive an email with some updates several weeks ago?
You did.
Okay.
But, and that's what I said, I don't remember receiving anything after that.
Okay.
The staff has been working on this, and we've spent a great deal of time looking at some options on how we could address, not only to honor the history of African-Americans in the city of Auburn and this, in this general area, but also how we can honor the late Rosa Parks, and also this whole idea of the Rosenwall School, how that could play into, to this, this museum site. We, again, as city manager, I've mentioned, we have identified a piece of property. I've had some preliminary discussions with the owner, and we'll see kind of where that goes, and once we're able to get that information together, we'll get back with the city manager and hopefully be prepared to come to council with our proposal, and you can see what we have come up with as a possible idea for moving forward.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Thank you.
All right, now's the time for citizens' open forum.
I'd like to add, I appreciate your work on it, Mr. Davis. And I think you hit in the right direction. I'd like to see some local stuff in the museum from our local history on Northwest Auburn.
All right, citizens' open forum, this is a time that you can come and speak to anything and everything. You have three minutes, and we welcome your comments.
Madam Mayor, Protem, ladies and gentlemen.
Home of the council, Herbert Debar Jr., 412 Black Road, Apartment 111. I also echo what Mr. Dawson commented earlier this evening. Thank you very much for that, sir. As a person who has had some trouble with the police, I do understand what police officers have to go through, and I am aware that it's not very easy. And I've also had the opportunity to watch Mr. Jones lobby on certain gun legislation that he's concerned about, so I really appreciate what you've said, and for speaking for police officers. I would also like to thank the council and also the Parks and Recreations people for the new Baki facility at Martin Luther King Park. Hopefully, it'll make it more attractive, and it'll get people, particularly living in that area, more opportunity for Parks and Recreation. Thanks to everybody involved with that. And I would like to send a personal thank you to Councilmember Smith for putting on that seminar last week at the library on how to start a small business. I have a book published, and I'm hoping to get into business myself one day, hopefully. It will take a while, but your advice will be helpful a lot. I just wanted to let you know that in public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
Denmark.
Mr. Denmark, I'm sorry.
It's my last thing. That's okay.
If I may, Mayor Protem, my family and I ran to Academy Sports and bought some bocce balls, and we were out there on Saturday, and we had a great time, and I'm looking forward to going out there a lot more.
Yeah, I was encouraged, I think, by somebody in Parks for Recreation to try out that thing. I understand they're supposed to have a tournament sometime soon, and so if I'm going to enter in it, I've got to get busy. Thank you again.
Anyone else?
This also pertains to getting the amendment into, activated in somehow. And, oh, excuse me, Linda Dean, 474 Scott Street, Auburn. And I was sitting here listening to the whole discussion. I, I would have to look back myself at how that discussion unfolded pertaining to the procedure for getting that amendment added, and perhaps the rest of you guys should also look back at that, because the way I'm remembering it, Mayor Anders instructed Mr. Cotton to develop the language for getting that amendment into the correct procedure so that it could be actually considered by the council. And it looks to me like we're just going in a circle here when that's already been done, and Mr. Anders asked for that, to move forward and to go through the correct procedure on that, and now we're back at square one. So I suggest that we revisit the video or the audio and see what was said, so that we can quit going in a circle here. And I'm, I hope I'm being objective about that, but that's the way I'm remembering it, but we all have faulty memories, and let's look back at it and do what Mayor Anders asked us to do on it. Thanks so much, and I'm sorry y'all had to put up with me twice in the same evening.
Are you talking about the burden ordinance?
That?
No, the ADDU.
Oh.
In historical.
LB Jackson, 814 North College. I want to apologize for the second time around, because I do appreciate what's being done over in the Westview area as it pertains to housing. I think that there should be more advertisement, more collaboration with our CDGB people to attract minorities, and I want to emphasize that, because the developers in Auburn are not interested in anything but the land and what they can put on it in terms of student housing, but minority contractors that are interested in developing properties where the city would participate. And what I'm hearing this afternoon is that $140,000 is just sitting over here waiting to be used, and there's nowhere we can put it. But why did it come to this? Why did it happen to be at the last minute, we need a place to put $140,000 when we have all of these needs in Northwest Auburn for housing and development?
I think we addressed that, though, in our meeting. We discussed that, and it was timing from receiving the funding and the allocation of how to use those funds.
Don't give me some more time, right?
No, I mean, we, this is, we've addressed that.
You, you did address, what was it you addressed? I didn't understand that part.
We addressed why the funding is having to be allocated to the sewer projects now, and then those monies will then be reallocated back to the projects that they're for. So they've had a plan in place, we just have now received the funding later than expected.
Right, but.
I thought we're just sitting around when we don't have. Not that we're just sitting around when we don't have a way to use the money.
What I'm saying is that, that the solicitation of, since we, we know that Auburn growth is just growing under the scenes, but Northwest Auburn's properties are only being sought after as far as development, as far as student housing and other type of housing. What I'm saying is that if Mr. Davis or the city would put together a task force that would procure, go out and seek out developers that will participate and help to use CDGB money, uh, where they would produce low-cost housing like Habitat is doing, and that's a great thing that you're doing. But what I'm saying is, we shouldn't, we should have a list of projects, and Councilman Taylor and I have talked about, there should be a list of projects waiting to use that money and to have participation from the city in terms of housing, because we have a dire need. Our community is dying, because people don't have adequate housing in Northwest Auburn. I have two acres or plus on Tucker Avenue, now that I hear that you guys have monies to develop, I am going to seek out that I'll bring to you guys and say, if I can get you guys to cooperate with me, I'll build a price point house that will help supply the need, because right now, it costs me, if it costs $200 a foot for the other guy down on, uh, Morse Mill, it costs me that same 200 to develop. But with the help of the city, I can develop that kind of housing, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else for citizens' open forum? Alright, seeing none, do I have a move to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.